All right. Good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. It's May 24th, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and our republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
A agenda item was brought to our attention with the opportunity to apply for federal money to support an IT program in town. So I want to see if there would be a motion to amend the agenda to add a congressionally directed spending program item. And this would be added right after public audience.
I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you very much. We will begin with public audience and we received one email. This is from Joan Coe. She writes, on May 12th, 2021, I received my FOI request for the internal investigation of a workplace intimidation complaint against Sergeant Sagan regarding the shotgun incident on April 19th, 2019. It's alleged that Sergeant Sagan walked into the visitors' entrance of the Simsbury Police Department carrying the shotgun in a heightened anxious demeanor, which was noticed by a member of staff and reported. It's alleged that Sergeant Sagan walked with the shotgun into the locker room where he was yelling and flailing the shotgun in the air and making disparaging remarks about the officer's failure of the notification of the shotgun in his daily report. It's alleged that members of the staff heard the ruckus in the locker room and the noise coming from the locker room. Sergeant Sagan called the officer to return from the shift change in a loud and demeaning way. When the officer returned to the locker room, he faced Sergeant Sagan holding the shotgun across his chest while agitated as he racked the gun ready to shoot. When the shotgun is racked, there is a loud noise alerting the person that the gun will fire non-lethal rounds when the trigger is pulled. It's alleged that the officer thought his life was in danger all the time this scenario unfolded. Luckily, there were no rounds in the rifle. At the present time, Sergeant Sagan is a shift sergeant in the Simsbury Police Department. It appears that Sergeant Sagan has a history of bullying and intimidating people and a history of uncontrolled anger management issues that have surfaced over the years. This alleged scenario points to the fact Sergeant Sagan is a bully trying to intimidate an officer of the Simsbury Police Department. It is noticed in the discipline log of the Simsbury Police Department that on 3/12/2009 Sergeant Sagan was disciplined with a suspension for mistreating an arrestee. On July 15th, 2014, The Hartford Current reported that a lawyer sued Simsbury Police Department over an arrest. It's alleged in the lawsuit that Sergeant Sagan knowingly submitted a false arrest affidavit in 2013, charging Oliver with a third degree larceny. The criminal case was nullled according to court records. The lawsuit alleges that it would never have been brought except for animus towards Oliver shown by Sagan. The lawsuit alleges that Sergeant Sagan knowingly left key facts out of an arrest warrant. Another lawsuit was filed in United States District Court by Douglas Garafalo v. Detective Sergeant Thomas Sheehan and Detective Scott Sagan on October 9th, 2019. According to the order, the case shall proceed against Detective/Sergeant Sheehan and Detective Sagan in their individual capacities on plaintiff's 14th Amendment procedural due process claims concerning loss of his vehicle and personal property. On December 9th, 2020, Corey Thomas, Simsbury's first black police officer, was appointed to the Police Department with Chief Bolter and Corey Thomas. Took fit. After a few weeks of training, Corey Thomas abruptly resigned from the Simsbury Police Department and returned to the New Britain Police Department. It is alleged that Sergeant Sagan, as a supervisor of Corey Thomas's training, used intimidation and bullying tactics during training, causing Corey Thomas to abruptly resign. Internal investigations in a small department such as the Simsbury Police Department leaves no protection for an officer willing to tell the truth. There's no incentive to tell the truth or find the truth as the records show. The same officer would have to return to work and work with the same supervisors in a toxic work environment. It appears that all of these allegations that Sergeant Sagan has a liability to the Simsbury Police Department and should be investigated with an outside agency for his unacceptable behavior. At May 10th, 2021, the Police Commission meeting, I submitted a letter to be read aloud under the correspondence portion of the agenda. Chairman Jennifer Caulfield distributed my comments to the commissioners and refused to read my letter in public session. The commissioner summarized letters from the public praising the officers in open session. The commissioners have decided that any information challenging their authority should not be made public. At a prior meeting, the Police Commission suspended public audience for the first time in a decade because the narrative challenges their authority to oversee the Police Department. As a public commission appointed by the Board of Selectmen, I would like to know how they can get away with arbitrarily deciding what submissions should be made public. I'm not receiving the Board of Selectmen meeting agenda, although I subscribe to it. Is this another form of cancel culture? Simsbury needs better leadership on the Board of Selectmen than we have now. At the May 10th, 2021, meeting of the Board of Selectmen, I discussed the affidavit submitted to CHRO, Lorenzo Milage versus Simsbury High School. I placed the link to the affidavit and to date, there were 89 views and 35 downloads. The link is provided in the written version. All of my comments and pictures will be posted at Simsbury Patch, Twitter @JoanCoe and on Facebook. Is there anybody who we had participating in public audience virtually with us tonight? No? Okay. Find my agenda. We just have one item of selectman action before we get to our presentation, and that is a congressionally directed spending program. The town just recently became aware of an opportunity. This was under Senator Blumenthal's office to apply for money under a congressionally directed spending program. And the project that staff is proposing would be an investment in our Police Department's IT infrastructure. I just wanted to see if either Maria or the chief wanted to elaborate on that proposal. Maria?
Chief, sure. Chief or Rick, do you guys want to just give a few quick highlights on what those technology improvements would be?
Yeah, sure. I can do that. So basically, you know, there's some upgrading or enhancements to our mobile RMS system. That is our ability to have a records management system and access to all of our information in the cruisers. So it's the MDT's in our cars, all that sort of connectivity that we have there. So we're looking for a small upgrade and application enhancement there. Right along with that, the way that we currently connect for all of those devices, for our criminal justice information systems that we have access to, is through an outside vendor and an outside agency. And so we're looking to bring that in-house and having our own Net Motion software. So over time, we'd have some significant savings on that because instead of paying the vendor, we will be providing that service through our own IT department here. Also, an addition of three of the MDT's, the mobile data terminals in the cruisers. So with the police accountability law from last year, there were some requirements, and that was cameras in cars and dash cameras. I'm sorry, and body cameras. So we're looking to hold on to one more cruiser. We don't need to purchase an additional cruiser, but we're looking to hold on to one because we, the way that we cycle our cruisers out is, you know, every few years we move the heavily traveled mileage cruisers out. We're going to hold on to one more next year because we've seen the need to have another marked cruiser. And that marked cruiser for the patrol function needs a dash camera in that. Our dash cameras are new, and they also need an MDT to go along with that. So we would want the officer to have that connectivity. So it's basically to provide an MDT for a cruiser that we're keeping and holding on to. And then also add those to the school resource officer vehicles. So what we have seen is we do have an occasional need to use those cruisers for a patrol function. But also, those cruisers for the schools are out and about, going to and from schools, different school locations. And it would be nice to have that access to that criminal justice information systems in those cars with an MDT, and also nice to have the dash cameras in there for all the reasons that we're looking to have dash cameras anyways. And there's one addition on this, or additional point on this, is just to enhance our site security here at Town Hall. So there are cameras around Town Hall, and we would just be looking to replace some of the aged cameras and then to enhance some more. You know, we'd like to have this facility have the option of people coming here for, you know, a safe exchange zone. We labeled that many years ago here, that people can come here and do a safe exchange in the parking lot. And we're just looking to make it a little bit broader, a little bit better technology, a little bit safer, more secure environment, 360 degrees around the Town Hall.
Great. Thanks for the summary. Are there any questions? Okay. Is there a motion effective May 24th, 2021, to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to submit an application to Senator Blumenthal for the congressionally directed spending request in the amount of $70,000 for technology upgrades for the Simsbury Police Department? And also to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute all documents related to the award? Should we receive it?
Move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, I know you're heading to the Police Commission meeting in a bit, so good to see you. A good night.
You as well. Thank you.
We will move on to our presentation tonight, which is on the Planning Commission's Affordable Housing Plan. Just a very brief background, under state statute, each town needs to develop an affordable housing plan to outline how it plans to increase the number of affordable homes under Connecticut General Statute 830G. 830G provides a very specific definition of affordable, which will be explained in the presentation. And I know there's been a lot of interest in our community around issues of affordability, and I'm really glad that we can have this discussion tonight. I'll introduce Bill Rice, who's the Chair of the Planning Commission, and also Mike Liddon, who is our town's Planning Director.
Thanks, Eric. And yeah, thank you for the invitation to share this document and some of the work that went into making it. I think it'll be helpful. Hopefully, it's educational. And Eric, you're right, there is a lot of conversation going on regarding affordability in general. The Affordable Housing Plan maybe is a component of an overall affordable housing program. So as you said, it is a direct response to Connecticut General Statute 8-30J, which outlines the need for a town to have an affordable housing plan. Thanks, Mike. Yeah, actually, Mike, you know what? I think, can I share my screen?
Yeah, sure. I'll stop sharing.
Okay. Sorry about that.
So.
We need it a little better. Share. So if someone could just confirm that they see my screen?
We do.
Yeah, okay. So 8-30J is the instructions to all the towns in Sims, in Connecticut to create an affordable housing plan with the objective of trying to meet or exceed the minimum percentage of defined affordable housing units within the town. So I just want to briefly show the actual Affordable Housing Plan, which I assume many of you have probably already received. It's not a very lengthy document. It's 13 pages or so. It goes into some detail relative to what is affordable. It actually quantifies some of the calculations that are buried into 8-30G. And our plan here actually shows what a household income would need to be to qualify, whether you're at the 80% of the area mean income or the 60% of the area mean income. So we've taken some of the guesswork out of someone trying to apply the calculations that are in the statute. Also embodied in the plan are some statistics about what we do have currently as far as affordable housing. And at the time that we published this document, it was around 4.74% of our housing stock was defined as affordable. And just to remind everybody, the state target is a minimum of 10% of a town's housing stock. We've also spent a little bit of time trying to offer some suggestions on how to increase the number of affordable housing units in Simsbury. Of course, this plan is not, it's not a law, it's not legislation. It's a place to start, some ideas. I think we had a couple that were pretty innovative. My personal favorite is the, if the town takes over a house in a tax sale and it's, it ends up being, I guess, sold or, I don't know if it's auctioned. I'm not sure what the mechanism is. But to perhaps include a covenant or a, another deed restriction that would then qualify as a home under the Affordable Housing Tally. Now, I think practically speaking, there's not a lot of tax sales through town, so it really probably wouldn't have a big impact on the total. But I thought it was a good example of how some of the commissioners and town staff were kind of thinking outside of the box. Now I'll switch over to our our little prepared presentation.
Hey, Bill?
Yeah.
In the plan, and maybe Mike, so maybe dumb question, but I'm on the law slide, so page six. According to MLS, out of the 168 of the 499 residents sold in 2020, were 250,000 or less. 250,000 represents the average target price of the affordable homes in Simsbury most recent 830G application. So that means that the price of those houses, the 168, would have met the number? But the deed restriction isn't there? Mike, is that right?
That's correct, Sean. Yeah, if you went by numbers alone, the sales price would have, you know, so, for example, sales price for a three-bedroom at the 80% area mean income is $274,000 in Simsbury. So we chose 250 because that was in between 80% and 60%. So it clearly showed, here's your median, and this out of the, you know, transactions, we had X, you know, that many sales that were $250,000 or less.
So to that end, Mike, you know, ballpark of the 90, we'll call it 9100 households, if you threw out the arbitrary deed restriction, how many would hit the affordable number?
If we're just going to, let's say, 250, we're at like between 25 and 30%.
Okay.
But we don't have those statutory protections such as deed restrictions. So. And that's unfortunate. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Sean.
I was just going to think it's interesting because the, you know, the Plan of Conservation and Development noted a lack of, I think, what was it, 44% or something? Noted a lack of affordable housing. 48% of the respondents, it's just, it's interesting, right? Then, and I think about eight people in town understand the deed restriction requirement. So it's interesting that there's actually 25% of the houses are deemed affordable, but it aren't viewed as.
By the sales price, you know, alone, they would be affordable, but not by the definition in the statute.
Yeah.
They're naturally occurring.
Yeah. The only reason I'm bringing this up is, right, is you guys have heard me rail about the deed restriction, but it's a complex issue, right? And I think the report you guys did, Bill, because, you know, I did read it and I appreciate the effort you put into it, really kind of lays that out. I think that there's a lot of ways to look at all this. So sorry for the interruption. I just.
No, no problem. No.
That was important to frame the discussion.
Can I just speak on that, too?
Yeah, please, Jackie.
So Sean and I have talked about this before on this board. There are a lot of concerns with those deed restricted properties. And if we're going to go forward trying to build up our affordable housing just by the deed restriction, they are very tough to get a loan on. So it's very hard for buyers to get a lender and to qualify. And with the deed restriction, once the person qualifies, they go to sell the property, let's say in 10 years. They have no equity. They cannot make any equity on this property, and it has to sell to somebody else who fits the same criteria. So it's really hard. And I would be very cautious about adding more just deed restricted properties into this. And I'll give you a really quick example. Our most recent affordable housing 830G qualified neighborhood is Hendrix off of Climax Road. In the last year, 12 months, 13 houses sold on Hendrix. One of those houses was deemed affordable by our guidelines. It was under 250,000, one out of the 13. Then another one was under 300,000. All of the other houses sold up to $560,000. But this came in as affordable housing under the 830G guidelines. So I don't know. I look at it as a cautionary tale.
Yeah. Jackie, I appreciate you sharing those statistics. And in a moment, I'm going to let Bill get to the presentation. But I think this is actually a really, really good opening to, one, show this is complicated, but we also have to be really clear, I think, when we're speaking to the public and when we're working on this issue, what it is we're solving for.
Eric, you know, that's a really good point. The Plan of Commission during the development of this document had very, very similar comments to what Jackie and Sean and I'm sure other selectmen have said. And that's why we feel it was a very important element of the plan, which is education. The only, the part that we didn't have a real answer to is how do we educate people? You know, how do we let them know that 25% of the housing stock in Simsbury actually sells for less than what a house in an 8-30G development would sell for?
Could we start with a mailer? Could we get that out?
Well, okay, Jackie, so I'm not sure, you know, if we're trying, yeah, we want to have a conversation here, right? But as I understand it, maybe there's, you know, another effort that's ongoing, right, Eric? With the Spirit Council to try to come up with a problem statement?
Correct, correct. So again, let me turn it over to you in a moment. But since you brought it up, we have asked the Spirit Council to form a subcommittee looking at issues of housing in generally, housing equity. And among their first tasks will be, you know, if we were to form some kind of a larger task force to look at this issue, you know, more holistically than beyond simply 830G, what would that problem statement be? Or what would that gap be that we're looking to close? So with that, Bill, let me turn it over to you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can I just ask a quick question? I just want to be clear. Bill, the Affordable Housing Plan as required under 830J only addresses 830G affordable housing, right?
That's right, Sean.
It does not care about all of the actual affordable housing that we're talking about outside of it. It's only complying with the statute, right?
You understand it correctly.
Beautiful. So that, it's just, again, so essentially what Eric said, you're right. There's a whole other component that we have to look at that is not what Bill's going to talk about tonight, right? So, and you're not supposed to, so that's okay, Bill. All right. We'll let you get to it. Sorry.
Okay. We've already talked about the 10% minimum percentage of housing stock. Okay, so yeah, let's recap this. I know you probably discussed it, but how does Connecticut define affordable housing per the statute? Well, first, a deed restriction can be filed, which restricts the sale and resale price of the house for a number of, a period of 30 years. Okay, that's when we talk deed restriction. That's a little more detail behind that. And Jackie, you're right, that's quite a burden. You know, I think it's one of these bait and switch types of things. I shouldn't get so opinionated, sorry. But, you know, it may allow, it may allow someone to, you know, get into a brand new home. But they earn no equity. I've heard people say, and not homeowners, but other people during discussion, that what's the incentive for a person to maintain that property and improve it if they can't make any money on it? So, you know, we can have this conversation, but the law is the law as it stands right now, right? I think we have to, I think we have to work within that, within that boundary. A couple other.
Bill, can I, Bill, hey, it's Chris Peterson. Jackie, can, again, we're like, I'm sorry, guys.
It's important to us.
Yeah, it is. So just, I just want, just want to, don't want to skip over the whole concept of assistance, cost assistance. So with, if the property is, meets the profile and is deemed in the 830G, there are assistance for loans through the federal government that come with it, Jackie? Or are you saying, yes, there are, but they're actually more difficult to come by for those individuals versus getting a conventional loan right now? Just could you?
So they're getting a mortgage period for a deed restricted property is very difficult. There are not a lot of lenders that will handle them because of the program and because of the requirements. So it's a very low income level. And anytime you have more than one person making money in that house, it throws the parameters way off.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So Bill, and you're saying, but with it, though, Bill, is there a federal program that is guaranteed to, I give that person a loan, that's not a guarantee, but that it, you have access to it through a guaranteed program through the government? And whether or not you get approved is a different story. But that property then automatically qualifies for a government program?
No, that's not, that's not the case.
Okay, good. So that's good. So if I, so if you have, if you have a buyer in Sims, so it goes back to the whole concept. I'm almost done with my soapbox. It goes back to the concept. If you have a buyer in Simsbury who, so house number two is free market. House number four on the street is 830G. They're both selling for 270. They're duplicate homes. House number two, which is free market, can obviously increase in value and create equity for that buyer. House number four is frozen, restricted. No equity can be gained by that buyer.
Certain adjustments that are made, but nothing that would, you know, equate to a traditional equity increase in.
Okay, that's, I just want to make.
You also have to sell to someone with the same qualifiers.
Correct. You can't.
That's the tough part.
You're, so if you actually want to sell your home, to a certain extent, you have to wait till a buyer comes along?
Yes.
For that home who fits in that profile? We all have to wait for buyers for our home?
Sure, yeah.
But this is, this is a more defined pool.
Yep. What, Chris, what you did, a really good lead-in, and I'll give this back to Bill, is the next thing, the government assistance, the USDA, the CHAFA loans. There are also grants out there so that a buyer does not have to pay back. So I think that is an excellent way to go. And I'll give it back to you, Bill.
Right. And I think, you know, this kind of struck me right now, but maybe, Mike, we've talked about this. Someone who has a government assistance, either with a down payment assistance or maybe a certain type of loan, would those also be deed restricted?
No.
No?
No.
They're, okay, they're mutually exclusive.
But also remember, we get a certain points on that, not as high compared to the deed restricted. It's a lower point system.
Right, okay, yeah. Different credit levels for the different types of criteria that a house possesses, yeah, or home.
Kind of like the EDS formula. It really doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, that's pretty much it. But what I think what you should look at is like, these programs are servicing the same population of the 80% or lower area mean income that were targeted at 830G. And these are programs that provided a buyer meets the qualifications either for the down payment assistance or the loan. You know, in theory, you have a housing stock that may qualify on price. Now you just need bodies that can qualify for these loan programs. And that's filling your existing housing stock.
All right. And then the third bullet is rental assistance such as Section 8. So, Mike, what do we have in town here that would qualify, like Eno Farms?
Willow Arms in Terrifil. There's some, there's some Section 8 housing approved there.
Okay. So Jackie, now I'm going to go on a little diversion. Hendrick's place, you said there's only two, two affordable houses that have been, you know, put under contract?
Yes. I went back a year from today, and there were 13 properties that sold.
Out of a total of 19?
Something. Something like that. In the neighborhood, yes, eighteen or nineteen total.
Yeah.
So only two of those were under three hundred thousand. So that doesn't help us if eleven others are market rate.
Right.
That's not going to get us toward our goal.
Yeah, it actually, it goes in the wrong direction. So, Mike, we had put the, um, provision that, uh, the affordables be built, you know, at a, uh, um, well, I tried to have all of them built first, but, uh, that didn't fly, but at a, like a pro, pro rata basis. So, yeah, I, I think there's six affordable, uh, units there. Um, so if.
That, that is correct, Bill. There's, there's six out of nineteen were deed restricted. Three are to the eighty percent, eighty, area median income.
Yeah.
And three to the sixty percent. But I, maybe, maybe we're getting a little in the weeds on project specific.
Alright, well, it's, it's important to me because, like I said, I wanted, if, if this was gonna be an affordable housing, uh, development, I wanted all the affordable housing to be built first. As a matter of fact, I told the developer, why don't you build all affordable housing? And, you know, that's, uh, you know, that's a way to move the needle, but I don't think it's very economically enticing for, for the developer.
Well, there are now programs out there for builder developers, and we might have to try to attract that. A per, you know, a builder developer who can get funds, whether it's state or federal money, to build only affordable housing.
Yeah, 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 I think that's a good way.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, is we, we lost a, a court settlement on that, right? So that development was actually approved by the court?
That's correct.
And the court, and, and again, this is another example where local, local control does make a difference. The chairman of planning is sitting here saying he wanted more affordable housing. And the court let him build, sounds like, on a, on a disproportionate basis. So we're actually losing affordable housing percentage as a result of the court order settlement, because they could not build the other four, right, Mike?
Hey, actually, Sean, it brings, it brings a good point. When, when an appeal is made under eight thirty G, the general state statutes, your local zoning regs, like for, for density, do not apply.
Right.
So there is an example where you had a, a, a development on four and a half acres, nineteen homes. So basically, seven thousand square foot lots.
Right.
Type. Uh, they're a very dense development. Um, and, but because there's no, uh, density controls, the, the way that the statute works is thirty percent of that development is supposed to be set aside as affordable, but yet they get seventy percent to build at market rate.
Yep.
So even though you had an, in a development approved by the appeal process, you still had sixteen homes added that are market rate homes to our portfolio with only six that will qualify as, as quote unquote, eight thirty G affordable, uh, house, housing units. And that's just, that statute, unfortunately, because we're the creatures of statute.
Yeah, no, and I get that. I guess my point is, is the statute being, statute being imposed. Um, it, it sounds like the developer has built the market rate, but not yet built or sold the, the affordable, so. I, I, again, I haven't read the, the, the court agreement, but I'd imagine there's no clawback if the developer doesn't build the affordable housing. He's got his money and he'll walk away from the affordable at this point potentially. So once again, you know, Bill, not your fault, but, you know, we're working with a flawed statute here, both from a, how it's written and how it's been implemented by the courts.
Mike, can I, I have a question for you. Just, just for knowledge, um, up at Dorset Crossing, there's the MS Homes or Community. Don't those qualify under affordable housing, or do they not?
Yeah, actually, that's a low income housing development. You have individuals there that, that are making ten and twenty percent of the area median income. So that's an example of a housing project that we're getting points on through government assistance, because that was, that was funded also by CHAFA, the Connecticut Finance Housing Authority. Um, and it's affordable housing, but not only that, it's affordable housing that's meeting a dual purpose. It's affordable housing, but also providing housing for a segment of the population that, that may not otherwise be able to afford to live in Simsbury due to their disabilities in addition to their, um, income levels. So.
Yeah, thank you.
Mike, was the enti, the entire development, or it's only part of the development up there, right?
It's just the, uh, Simsbury Specialty Housing, which is that it's in the rear of the property, uh, by Reagan Development, and that's forty-eight units that were, uh, the, that the low, the quote unquote, low income housing, or let's, we'll call it affordable.
Yep.
Because I don't, but I don't want to intertwine those two terms together, because they're very different terms.
Yeah, no, it's fair. And remind me what the total build out was up there?
Uh, there's, there's about to two hundred and thirty-five units endorsed in East Point plus the forty-eight.
Okay.
Uh, that are at, um, uh, uh, Simsbury Specialty Housing. So let's just say we're just, we're just under, uh, uh, three hundred units total.
Okay.
And, and it's still growing, correct?
There, there are two, uh, development pads that are toward the north, the, uh, south, southwest, behind uh, East Point and behind, uh, Simsbury Specialty Housing, which were approved for additional housing developments or, um, uh, office space. But I mean, the discussions I've heard with my offices, they were pursuing a potential residential development there. However, that's very preliminary. Don't.
Yeah, okay.
It can change.
I guess where I was going though is, is do those count on a unit basis as a one-to-one, or, I don't, and we don't need to get into how the points go, but are we getting credit for forty-eight units of housing?
We are getting credit, just, uh, not as, you know, it's in a different portion. They're going into the government assisted credits.
Yeah. I just, I think it's important, though, when we think about development, so three hundred and, and forty-eight, that means we're improving. You know, right, to Bill's point, you know, if, if we're gonna move the needle, you know, we've, we've got to make the proportion of new affordable housing higher than non-affordable housing, right, to grow it, otherwise we're gonna stay the same or shrink.
Right. Well, I mean, maybe, maybe to, to kind of put it in numbers, I mean, uh, we need, if we were gonna hit the ten percent requirement, and I'm sorry, Bill, from stealing the thunder, we, we need to construct four hundred and eighty-one affordable units. So that's a lot of units that we'd have to construct to meet the ten percent under eight thirty G.
Is that single-family homes, apartments, a mix of both? How does that?
Mix of, it could, mix, housing units, a mix of both, but the key is construction, obviously.
Yeah.
It has to be deed restricted. So there's the, there's the rub from the statute.
Yep.
Well, but that number's gonna move. So four eighty-nine, and that's right now without any other new construction happening.
But I was about to say, that number means you can't approve or build a single market rate unit.
Right, because every time we do, that number's gonna change.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Which is why.
It's actually gonna go down.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
So we would need to have that discussion, um. Is the work group that you and Eric started to talk about? Do we have elected officials that are gonna be on that, as well as I know Spirit was coming up with a statement? Like, is that something where planning will be a part of that, zoning will be a part of that, the land use is?
I think half of the free world was gonna be a part of it eventually, given the, the tentacles, but let's, um, let's, let's go with Bill first and then maybe get to that later, right, Eric?
Yeah.
Sorry, Bill, we keep, we keep jumping on your presentation.
No, no, I'm, I'm glad everybody's, uh, as passionate about it as I am. Um, yeah, just to, you know, some, some more, uh, uh, fundamentals, um, to qualify for, uh, uh, to purchase a, a home, and I actually, actually rent a, an apartment under eight dash thirty G. Um, the, 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 the amounts that either a house can cost or a, an apartment could cost per month, um, is based on, uh, not exceeding thirty percent of the household's income. Um, and the, the other key that, that's used in the calculation is what the median income is for our economic area. Um, and we're, we're in the West Hartford, East Hartford metro area, and that's, uh, updated, uh, how, how frequently, Mike? Is that annually?
Annually, that's updated.
So, uh, yeah, you know, there's a little bit of administration that goes along with this, uh, qualifying people, um, and, uh, then there's, there's two, there, there's two levels of income that the statute, uh, deals with. Uh, first is, you know, someone who's making eighty percent of the median income. And you, so you take that eighty percent of the median income, multiply it by thirty percent, and that's the month of the maximum, I guess that would be the annual uh, amount of money that someone would be expected to spend on their housing. Uh, but, uh, the, the statute also has provisions for, uh, a, a household that's making, uh, sixty percent of the median income. So that, Jackie, that's why you see those variations over at, uh, Hendrick's, Hendrick's cottages, right? Is that what it's called? Hendrick's cottages?
Hendrick's Road, and, and there's, yeah, that's not the old street.
Yeah, cottages and McMansions, yeah.
Yeah, uh, I was, I was kind of taken aback when I saw some of the real estate transactions for the market rate houses, like, yeah, pushing five hundred thousand. Uh, but in the same, in the same newspaper, uh, edition, uh, you know, on Friday where they show the real estate transactions, there was one for about two hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, that, that corresponds to the eighty percent income level. Uh, when, when this, the, when this, uh, development was being discussed, the, the calculations, uh, for the sixty percent income, I think had it around two hundred and ten or two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, now, remember, one of, one of the other things is, you, you, the, the houses can't look any different from the outside. You know, you know, you, you're not supposed to, uh, you know, uh, be able to tell who's got the, uh, the, 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 uh, uh, the deed restrictions and who don't. So, uh, that I haven't, yeah, I guess, I guess I'm, okay, I've driven through Hendrick's cottages a couple times. Uh, it's not obvious to me which ones are, uh, market rate versus the deed restricted, but, uh, I guess I only had two out of, two out of sixteen to choose from, or whatever it was. But anyway, um.
Bill, a question for you. Um, is there any, is there any data for you guys, um, on need? You know, we keep talking about sixty percent, eighty percent, and then I, you know, that forty-eight percent number from the P O C D. A, any sense of, you know, forget the statute, where we should be targeting?
Well, you know, the, all the discussions of need we've had, Sean, always go back to the statute where
Yeah.
Uh, they, they define the need as ten percent of a town's housing stock.
Yeah.
Um, and, and we didn't, we didn't take any steps or, uh, do anything else to try to really understand our local situation.
Okay, and, and again, it wasn't intuating you had to, just wondering if, if there was any information out there?
And, and just.
Oh, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, just so you know, if, when we get to the end, um, after Bill's done, we can talk about that, because that's one of the recommendations from cost on the Council of Small Towns that had a whole session last week on, um, what, how are towns dealing with affordable housing? And one of the recommendations is to do a gap analysis and a housing needs assessment as one of your initial, um, projects.
Alright, so maybe I can kind of cruise through these last few slides. We've discussed, I think, almost everything on them. Um, we talked about the current status of Simsbury. A little over four and a half percent, um, per the definition. And Mike mentioned a little bit earlier, you know, if we wanted to, uh, uh, somehow vault right to that, that minimum standard of ten percent, we need to create four hundred and eighty-one new units, so. Um, that, that's, that's a, that's a lot of development, uh, and of course, that it, it would be under the, uh, the assumption that no other market rate homes would be, uh, would be built. Okay, so, uh, the, the, the planning commission, you know, was kind of torn, I, I would say, when we first started considering what our goal should be for, for an increase. Of course, we were trying to be, uh, you know, supportive and compliant with the, with the regulation. Um, you know, some, some people said, well, we should, we should make our goal to get to the ten percent, and, and then we started doing a little arithmetic, and, and we said, well, you know, that's a real stretch goal. That's not even a stretch goal, that's a pie in the sky goal. We settled on increasing, um, the, the, the percentage of housing stock by one percent over the next five years. So if we're at four point seven four right now, what that would mean is we'd be at five point seven four uh, five years from now, and everybody's like, ah, jeez, that's really not much. And, uh, but we calculated it out, and, and that's ninety affordable housing units. Um, now, i- if, if we've built twenty, well, let's see, we have six over at, uh, Hendrick's cottages. We have, uh, how many, how many at, um, over, uh, what, what's the other one? Cambridge Crossing?
Uh, I believe it's eighteen.
Right.
When do they count, when they're built or when they're sold, or when they're approved?
When they're sold. That's when we can report them as, as affordable units.
So we've got two that only counted Hendrick's, and how many at Cambridge?
Uh, he, I, I think he may have sold one or two over there that are deed restricted. I know he had issues at first. Getting buyers with lenders. I think they've found a path now, but, um, there was a struggle with that, with, with, with this whole deed re, deed restriction and, and just, you know, like it, like, like you said earlier, the limited population, either buyers or lenders.
So we've got twenty-five approved and three sold, basically?
Yes.
I believe so.
I'm only bringing that up because it's a complex problem, right? It's not just prove it on a plan of development, go do a site plan and poof, we've solved the problem, right? There's so much more to it than just that.
Yeah, it's not enough even to build the affordable housing, you have to sell it.
Yeah.
Yeah, interesting.
So, uh, ultimately, the, the planning commission, you know, dialed back our aspirations a little bit, uh, to this one percent over five years, which equates to ninety affordable housing units, and um, there, there were some crit, criticism of that during the public hearing for the, the plan. Uh, we listened to it, um, but I, I would say we probably landed on the, uh, the conservative side of the decision-making and, and kind of just, just held it to something that we thought was, it could be achievable. Uh, it, it, you know, um, but it, it, again, it doesn't necessarily have a big impact on the overall number.
From the statutory standpoint.
On the statutory standpoint.
Correct.
If you couple it with other efforts, it potentially could.
Yeah.
Be part of a larger impact.
Okay. Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, so then, then we spent a lot of time, you know, how do we meet our goals? Actually, this is when the, the planning commission sat back and said, you know what? Hey, um, you know, we all have, uh, ideas, um, but they're all kind of out of context, and, uh, you know, we did some research. We looked at a number of other towns, uh, affordable housing plans. Um, some of them had, uh, parts that were applicable to Simsbury, others had some that um, would be rather difficult to integrate into an overall plan. Um, but that's, that's when, you know, the, the planning commission kind of realized, hey, you know, we probably need a little, a little more help, uh, with coming up with real concrete ways to, uh, to create affordable housing units, and, um, that, that's when we decided to add an action item to the plan that, that recommends, or at least suggests to the town that a task force be developed, and now we can see certain steps that, that are being, uh, uh, taken in that direction. But, um, outside of that, um, we, we really felt that, you know, we have a lot of, a lot of housing units in town that are actually truly affordable, uh, by most people's standards. Um, and I think that Simsbury definitely has this, you know, okay, I'm assuming, I don't know this to be true. I believe Simsbury probably has a reputation of having expensive homes. Uh, and someone, you know, that's looking for something in the two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range may not even think about looking in Simsbury. I don't know. But, um, somehow getting the word out that there are, uh, you know, o- other, uh, options for affordable housing in town. Um, one of the big, uh, items that's being discussed, you know, statewide for sure, is these inclusionary zoning regulations. Um, that, that's certainly something that could have the potential to increase the, uh, amount of affordable housing in town, uh, shouldn't, uh, be ignored, uh, nor do I think it should be the exclusive, uh, yeah, exclusive inclusionary, sorry, but, uh, the only, the only lever to pull in trying to, uh, make, make a change. Um, Mike Glidden, uh, was kind enough to share with us the, uh, community, uh, what is it?
Community block grant.
Yeah, block grant. So there may be some, some funds available for housing rehab. Um, that, that's another option that, uh, that we suggest in, in, in the plan. Well, thank you. So it's, uh, you know, without regurgitating everything, these are kind of the, the high spots, and, uh, I think the more, uh, important points of it.
Bill, there was, um, something else that came out of the plan that I wanted, I was hoping either you or Mike could elaborate on, which is the concept of an affordable housing ordinance. And I'd just love to learn just a little more about that and why some communities pursue that.
Affordable housing ordinance.
Did I make that up?
No, I saw that too.
Affordable housing ordinance, yeah. I guess.
No, we love this. Come on, you gotta, you gotta, you know, we love our ordinances.
Yeah, Sean knows I love, I love my ordinances.
Don't water your lawn. Don't water your lawn.
Uh honestly, I have to refresh my memory on this one.
Mike, is that something that you're familiar with?
So so, I mean, it would just be another a another option that's out there that would be, you know, kind of putting a a a. Assistance on developing affordable units in town. Um it's something that through the Small Cities Block Block Grant Program, they're now or it's an it's an activity that that they are asking communities to. Uh undertake if you're participating in the program. Um it's i- i- the town of Fairfield is an example where they have in ordinance. The town of Fairfield also, you know, had a very robust plan. Um and they use between the ordinance and establishing, I I know some people may not like hearing this, but uh through eight. To I the general state statutes, under their ordinance, they um established a fee that went into a housing trust fund. Which uh helped finance uh the construction of affordable housing units in town. So that was one of the things that was in their ordinance. Um and and in their sense, uh you know, Sacred Heart University, University, Fairfield University did some expansions, they had half a million dollars sitting in their funds. Um and what the what it was was a surcharge on building permits, it was like a ten or twenty dollar su- surcharge on building permits. That was the intent of promoting new affordable housing units in town. The town of New Canaan does something similar to that. Where they they actually use the the through their ordinance, through that fee, um they use funds to do expansion of their housing authority. Um property uh based on the the surcharge on on fees. It's just i- ideas out there, just several tools that we we can use. In order to find other ways to add affordable units in town. Or just assist with some of the affordable units that are here.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Uh I guess one of one of a couple of comments and kind of as I wrap wrap my presentation up. Um I know, I know that there there are negative impacts if a town doesn't. Complete its plan of conservation and development every five years. I think they you lose access to some of the state. State funds. Uh Mike, we talked about this with the Affordable Housing Plan. I I think only eight, what, eight or ten towns in Simsbury have one.
That's correct.
Right?
Uh we are, we are in the uh first class.
And this is, it's not like it's been a new requirement, it's been around for a long time. Uh but i- is there any any uh penalty or a- any downside to a a municipality for not? Creating the uh Affordable Housing Plan?
So so uh what Bill's referring to, there was, this was created by Public Act in two thousand seventeen, the requirement of. Affordable housing plans under eight thirty J and General General State Statutes. Um there was an effort in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen to to do the similar um penalties, meaning. If you fail to update your plan of conservation development once every ten years, the town is considered ineligible for discretionary funding through the state. Um and, you know, there was, there was a, there was a very vocal movement that they were going to tie. The requirements for developing affordable housing plans to discretionary funding. Um right now, there's just that we we've conformed to our deadline. We have, we have developed a plan which is, which is uh meets the 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 requirements of eight thirty J. Um so we're safe. If the if the state were to say next year during the during the um. Uh General Assembly, uh when it when they're in session, say, now we're going to tie a penalty to communities that don't develop a eight thirty J. Plan and say that, you know, those similar to the P O C D, you can no longer apply for discretionary funding through the state, which which is. It's a pretty significant penalty if if we get hit with that. And that's also why, you know, the planning commission has been really diligent on updating the P O C D. We have not missed that deadline. So it was a, the planning commission took a real firm stance and Bill, I'm sorry to talk on your behalf on this, is. Getting this plan done in a timely manner, so we weren't under the gun to finish it. And with with the uh threat of looming uh perspective of uh having this, having us. Be considered uh ineligible for discretionary funding should the law be uh go to a in extreme. So, so like I said.
Appreciate that.
Just just to put a bow in this, let me look at this last page here. Um I've shared this idea with a couple of other team members here, but, you know, I'd love for us possibly down the road to consider. Um a a housing authority and it would be comprised of. The team would be, the oversight team would be comprised of folks from Mike and Bill's group and then some volunteers. And we identify properties in town where the town purchases those homes using some seed money. Either for economic development purposes or whichever, and we partner with a local contractor to. To rehab that home and bring it to the market. And then that home is then sold. And whatever proceeds are gained from that home are then put back into the Housing Authority Fund to pay back. The seed money. So ultimately, the taxpayers really are not paying for the Affordable Housing Program, just the seed, just the seeding of that program. And it just moves in perpetuity where the the Housing Authority Group, it may be one property at a time, but it's a committed. Uh effort on our part to put housing stock back in and it operates in a quasi private and public way. With a a local partner and, you know, partners po- possibly with the high school. And brings kids into the project for uh vocational training, which is clearly sorely needed by many of our local businesses and stuff. But um you know, ultimately, again, it's just it moves in perpetuity, identifying properties, buying them, rehabbing them, selling them for a profit. Or to to a profit and then multiplies out. Next time, once that fund is built back up, it allows us to buy two properties and four or five and so on. That's kind of like, you know, pie in the sky, but I think that's a kind of innovative thinking, I think that we should be thinking of. Um as we try to be thought leaders in the state and demonstrate to the state that we ha- demonstrate that we have a pr- a plan. Getting fi- five hundred units online is impossible, it's foolish to even talk about that. Um but incremental uh movement is dedication and it's and it's sincere and it's it's our commitment to. I think to to um the greater community as a whole.
Yeah, interesting, Chris, thanks.
Yeah.
So I I just wanted to bring up a couple of points um a- a- about affordable housing in general. Um so we have the Affordable Housing Plan, which is driven by the state. The eight thirty G, we can meet those requirements, that's not due till, it's due sometime in twenty twenty two, I believe, right? To so to make sure it's all done robustly. Um if if you attended the meeting that was held last week at at cost. Um they basically pulled together many first electments from across the state. Talking about their affordable housing plans and also recommendations for how a town should move forward. Um one of the top items that they recommend is uh what, like I mentioned before, the gap analysis and housing needs. Um, you know, to determine where we need the houses, not just the one percent, not to just meet the state needs. Right? But to meet the needs of the people in the town that want to stay in the town or come to the town that may not fall into that bucket. Um so they they brought a lot of people to the table. I have the link I can share with everybody, but there's a guidebook. And I believe I shared it, Mike, with you and Bill and Eric and Maria when we met back in December. Um so they recommend, again, a task force that would supplement. A part of this, you know, track one, which is your state required document. And then to also function to, you know, re- get this data done potentially by a consultant, potentially with ARPA money. But because I know there's funds there and to determine, you know, where to go, where our needs are. And then have people represented on this com- this task force representing planning, zoning, finance. Aging and disability, economic development, like the broader visionaries of the town. Um to determine tasks, who's going to do the tasks and who's going to do the detail behind that. Um so so that's just something I still, and and yes, we, so we passed the subcommittee for. Um Spirit Council, um the it's still, I reread the charter, you know, it just says that they'll focus on housing. And I would see that they would be represented on this greater task force. Um and could potentially use their subcommittee expertise for an area of their expertise. But they're not the experts overall, this whole big picture in the town. And so what I'm trying to understand, Bill and Mike, and is what the best approach is for you to move forward with this. So that we can engage more people and make um more availability and research on what what people need in this town. I I've had a neighbor reach out to me recently who thought the Sims Croft apartments were going to be single. Smaller units so that she could downsize there. And now it's a, you know, a high-rise apartment, and she's looking to stay in Simsbury and to buy somewhere and. May not need a deed restriction requirement, but want something affordable. So I'm just trying to figure out what the best next steps are for for us as a town. Um to broaden this conversation. It's been broad, it's been talked about by many subgroups, um Sinco. And grassroots groups over town, but um but there's a lot of information out there about a task force. Not to mention, there are over twenty towns in the state of Connecticut that have either a task force. Multiple names, advisory committee, committee, um steering commission. Uh that are all working in that effort that we could draw upon to to flush this out. So is that something, Bill and Mike, that would be helpful to you guys to keep moving in that in this direction?
Uh honestly, Wendy, um, you know, I I'm not sure what the town's. Direction is gonna be, okay? I think first step was the subcommittee and the spirit council. Um, uh I I'm not planning to take up any additional. Um. You know, um efforts on the planning commission at this point.
And you've complied with the law, right? I mean, this is the plan that you're going to submit, so as far as the law is concerned, we're compliant once this goes in, right, Mike?
That's correct.
And this was only respects to the statute.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And I I think the the reason we talked about spirit was. Affordable inclusive housing is well beyond the flawed nature of eight thirty G. And yeah, we got to deal with it as it is, but that's this much of the actual problem that I think we're trying to solve. And it's as much about people outside of this town, perhaps even more so about outside of this town than inside the town. Um in terms of attracting and and bringing in more residents who who think, uh to your point, Bill, earlier. To think the door might be closed in Simsbury when it's actually not, right? And it's mostly facilitated in terms of actually improving the the availability of housing stock, the education of the housing stock. Um linking people up with government programs and other abilities that are there. And I think, Wendy, to your point, it's a pretty complex role in terms of nobody, no one group actually owns this, which is why it's here for us, I think. Is technically it's ours to own because there's so many owners and constituents and. Different people that need to weigh in on on the issue, which again, I think Eric, I don't want to speak for you, which is why we told. Or asked the Spirit Council to 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 help us formulate the problem statement, and from my understanding, they've already talked to Fairfield. They've already talked to their consultant, um they've got a rough number of ten grand to do that gap analysis, they've already looked at that. Um they're potentially looking at a partnership with Farmington and and perhaps others to try to lower the cost. Um if we can get a consultant in here, because it's not just a Simsbury problem, it's it's a valley problem, it's a it's a Connecticut problem, right? So um before we all go, and my concern, and I think many concerns on this board is. Again, without clear defined direction and guardrails, which I I don't think any of us are able to define as we sit here right now. Um this could go a lot of different directions without mo- without much movement, and I think it's too important of an issue. Um to let that happen. Is that fair?
Yeah, yeah, there's been a lot of um a lot of public calls for a task force and I. You know, the way my brain's looking at this is I don't know how to form a task force before I know specifically what gap we're working to close. Because I don't know who needs to be part of the task force. Um the Spirit Council, from my perspective, has the um the infrastructure in place um to be able to do the very. Um beginning of this work, which is to identify um what what those gap or or gaps may be. And then um and then will no doubt need a, you know, robust representation uh from the community. Uh in order to make this successful. And I think one of the, you know, really special things that we have is the um American Rescue Plan money. Um we may be able to use a portion of that in order to um pay for the housing needs assessment and a task force. But before we get going on this work, I really want it to be successful. And I think the the more time we spend upfront, making sure we're solving the right problem for this community. The better chance that that group is going to come out of it with something that we can really use and move the needle. So I would rather. I would rather be a little bit slower and more deliberate than first in this space. Um and I think we've got a lot of communities, um I think we are on the leading edge and we have other communities that we can look at and continue to learn from and partner with potentially.
So Eric, what is your thought for? When would you want to bring in the land use boards, the elected officials, because as I know it, Spirit does not have that. So that's the part that they wouldn't have. They they don't know the town guidelines, the boundaries. So when would you bring in those chairman of the boards and things like that?
Yeah, so I'm open for ideas and I I would hope that, you know, that the Spirit Council wouldn't be um coming up with a problem statement in a vacuum. That they would be consulting other, um you know, experts in and outside of Simsbury. Um so I I would think, I would think pretty soon. Um.
I think it's twofold from that standpoint. It's it's the upfront problem statement defining, and then it's the execution. And and Bill, I would imagine you're going to be running that subcommittee of that task force. Um not to not to give you a to vol- voluntold anybody, but I think that's important that, you know. There's going to be this task force, but there's, I think there's going to be defined work groups underneath, otherwise you're going to have twenty five people in a meeting. And you're not going to get anything done because that's that's not an effective way to tackle any problem. Is I think there's going to be an eight thirty G or some version of that where, Bill, what, you know, the, do we need to change? Our subdivision regs, you know, and and, you know, reporting back on how that process is going, do you have town staff support, right? And but I don't think that that Bill or or Dave or anyone else is going to be asked to lead the educational component. Because as you said, right, Bill, that's, you guys are focused on land use regs and stuff. We need to make sure that that some other body, some other group, and maybe it's somebody on this group or it's someone else, is leading up that effort, right? And and digging into the educational opportunities and then connecting up, you know, through town staff and and through the overall task force to. How do we pair that together? And then, oh, by the way, how is it marketing Simsbury? And, you know, how does that work with Sarah and the chamber and and Main Street and everybody and. Jackie, in your profession, how are the, you know, what information do the realtors have? And that's maybe a different kind of education and.
Correct.
You know, and then it's, you know, the collaborative approach, what's Farmington doing? What's Avon doing? Are we leading that? Are we following it? Are we going to try to implement Chris's vision? Now, that's that's that was a cool forward-thinking idea. Where's the money come from? Okay, now we got to loop in. Lisa and Rob from the Board of Finance, so. Um I think there's, I I wasn't kidding before, I I I see anybody that wants to seat at this table, I think it's going to be a really, really big table. But I think, Eric, what what you're trying to say in in a short statement is, we need to properly define that. So that we're all not reaching for the potatoes at the same time during Thanksgiving, because that just ends up as a mess, right? And we all need to 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 orderly pass it around and and figure out how we're going to all play a role and move the needle. And again, as we talked about before, Bill, I think your ideas are really thoughtful with planning on that one percent number. I think the task force that we're working towards, um you know, and what Spirit's going to help us define is what's the other percent?
Mm-hmm.
You know, what's that, you know, what's what's the real affordability number? How are we improving people's lives beyond the silliness of the statute? I don't care about the statute. Let's let's make the town more affordable, right, is what we're all really trying to do. And we checked our, we checked our statute box, let's go do it for real now with the right issue and make people's lives better.
Yeah, I'm very curious to see what problem statement may come out of uh, you know, whoever does it, let's say the Spirit Council. Uh I think people have a lot of thoughts, a lot of them have not been vocalized. Uh and I I I think there's going to be a broad spectrum of uh of of feelings on on this subject.
I agree.
I I think you're absolutely right, Bill, and and I think until we know how we're going to define the problem. To try to come up with our fixes really.
Yeah, that'd be premature.
We're putting, yeah, it's it's premature and 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 I think the uh, Spirit Council is absolutely the right place. And I do see this as a really big table.
Yeah.
And and I think that's a good thing.
Well, it's good, it's good for inclusivity purposes. Um, it could make it harder for consensus.
But hopefully we can, the subcommittees will help with that.
Yeah.
With some structure.
Yeah, absolutely, Jackie. Um, you know, I'd also just, I know there's folks on Spirit watching, and I'd be remiss to say that this this isn't the only thing they're going to be working on um, with the housing subcommittee. There's, you know, some things they're really excited about, including the ability to promote some uh, loan programs that are specifically geared towards first time home buyers, uh, people who may currently be renting in Simsbury or who may want to move to Simsbury who could qualify for certain kinds of loans. Um, so they'd be looking to really get the word out about that. Um, and that's just, this is one idea. Um, we have covered a wide spectrum of uh, of of issues tonight and um, Bill and Mike, I really appreciate uh, your time um, and your and your committee's time on building this uh, report, and we look forward to partnering with you further in whatever those next steps look like.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So if y'all don't mind, I'm just going to drop off now.
I have dinner, Bill.
Okay, good night.
Thank you very much, Jets.
All right, I'm going to uh, move on to my first selectmen's report. Uh, starting with an update on vaccinations, currently, uh, the state is scheduling uh, vaccines for people who are twelve years and older and who live or work in Connecticut. Um, you can find out more about uh, uh, vaccine eligibility and scheduling a vaccine at ct.gov slash covid vaccine. There are a number of clinics throughout the state that are accepting walk-ups, uh, no appointment necessary. That list of clinics is available on the state's website. And uh, there are locations in Farmington, West Hartford, and Bloomfield, among others. I am pleased to share that starting on June first, uh, Town Hall, the Library and Eno Memorial Hall will be resuming their pre-COVID walk-in hours. Uh, in-person programs, events and gatherings will be phased in gradually throughout the summer. And the library will remain closed on Wednesdays. Um, at least through um, a portion of June to accommodate the weekly uh, vaccination clinic there. We're also anticipating being able to return to in-person meetings early this summer. The Governor's Executive Order permitting fully virtual meetings of public agencies has been extended through June thirtieth. Uh, the governor has indicated a desire to require all public agencies to hold hybrid meetings at all times when they meet going forward. And the town is researching technology of things such as Owl Labs and Zoom Room that will help facilitate these hybrid meetings. Over the past year plus, when our meetings have been virtual, it's been interesting to see that public participation at our meetings has increased. And I look forward to returning to, you know, in-person meetings as soon as it is safe and practical. But I'm also in favor of extending the option to participate remotely to members of boards and commissions and to the public. An update on the American Rescue Plan. So Simsbury is anticipating uh, receiving more than three million dollars under the American Rescue Plan, which is distributing uh, billions of dollars to state and local governments. And this money can be used for a range of purposes, including supporting public health programs, assisting small businesses and impacted employees and certain infrastructure improvements. At our next meeting scheduled for June fourteenth, the Board of Selectmen uh, will be discussing possible ways to invest this money in our community. And it will mark the very beginning of an important conversation. And we will be uh, looking for uh, the public's input as well um, into um, how this money should be invested here in Simsbury. Our annual Memorial Day ceremony will be taking place on May thirty first, uh, one week from today. Uh, but we, it will look a little bit different because of COVID nineteen restrictions. Unfortunately, there will be no parade. Uh, but there will be a ceremony at the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center. Pre-registration is required through our uh, Parks and Rec website, although there is no cost for the event. Gates will open at eleven thirty. Uh, there'll be food and beverage for purchase. Um, there will be uh, music and at one P M, uh, the ceremony begins. And uh, as always, I want to thank the Simsbury VFW and American Legion for their hard work making these Memorial Day events possible. The Spirit Council's Let's Talk series continues uh, in June. On June third, they'll be hosting a virtual panel discussion to give uh, voice to community members who identify as LGBTQ plus. Uh, registration is open now on the library's website under virtual programs. Um, and there will also be um, a uh, Juneteenth event. And uh, registration for um, that event is uh, not yet posted on the library's website, but I believe it will be shortly. Lastly, I invite you to join the town and the Old Drake Hill Flower Bridge Committee for a long anticipated dedication of the park, Upbrook Landing at the Flower Bridge. That'll be taking place on Saturday, June twenty sixth from ten A M to noon. And I'll turn it over to Maria for her town management report.
Hey, thanks so much, Eric. Good evening, everyone. Um, so first, our pandemic update. We are currently at the uh, clear or sort of gray level for the municipal COVID alert system. So yes, it's our first time, I believe, since the summer. Um, so very good progress in that regard. Um, unfortunately, the state did not report out on our positive case numbers this week. Um, but they did indicate that our positivity rate for those being tested was one and a half percent, which was a decrease from the the previous uh, week. Again, you know, we haven't really seen numbers that low since um, the summertime and really late summer, early fall. So very good progress. Um, the Farmington Valley Health District is reporting that they're continuing to see significant decline in new cases um, amongst people uh, over the age of forty. Um, and where they are seeing increases in case numbers are in people under the age of thirty nine. Um, partly, um, as as we'll be going through the vaccination, um, statistics, you'll see, I I do believe it's just because folks under the age of forty five more recently, um, were able to gain access to the vaccination. Um, so in terms of our overall number of residents, um, we have about sixty five uh, percent of our residents have received at least their first dose of of the vaccine. Um, and about fifty six point five percent of our residents are fully vaccinated. Um, when you sort of break it, break some of the numbers down uh, by age group, and this is some more recent um, data that the Health District have received um, for folks between the ages of fifteen and forty four. Um, they received data indicating that eighty percent of those eligible for a first dose have in fact received it. Um, while sixty uh, three percent are fully vaccinated. Again, so a little bit of that lag time as folks are are waiting to get their second shot and become fully vaccinated. Um, for folks between the ages of forty five and sixty four, the Health District received data indicating seventy nine percent of those people eligible had received their first dose and seventy percent um, were fully vaccinated. And as you reported um, a few weeks back, um, essentially a hundred percent or nearly everyone who is sixty five and over who was eligible has received their vaccine. So as a community, um, we're doing really, really well in terms of vaccination efforts. Um, the Farmington Valley Health District has completed their second clinic for children twelve years of age and older. Um, they've at this point administered six hundred first doses to this age group of of children. Um, and the Health District will be holding its last uh, weekly clinic at the library on Wednesdays on June ninth. Um, some very good news to report from a staff perspective. Um, for the month of May, we have had no new positive cases as well as no employees quarantined. Again, that's a first for us since the summertime. So um, as we're seeing, right, those numbers decrease in the community, that's also um, happening in the workforce as well. And as Eric touched on, we are gearing up for our returning to our pre-COVID walk-in hours for June first for Eno Town Hall and the Library. And we do um, want to remind patrons for at least the time being, we are asking patrons and staff to remain uh, wearing face coverings as as we're sort of waiting and giving some more folks in our community the opportunity to become fully vaccinated.
So our social
My question for you, before you you go on.
Sure.
Um, do we have numbers and on town staff where we had a hundred percent? And, you know, as an employer, I know that's interesting ground, but given the facing, you know, full public facing role we have, you know, how are municipalities like ours working through that?
Sure. So a lot of municipalities right now are doing the honor system um, and sort of anecdotally getting information on employee vaccination status. Um, and anecdotally, um, we think that um, many of our employees and most of our departments um, are vaccinated, which is just wonderful because we do have high contact with the public. Um, and the Health District did assist us in trying to help our municipal staff get vaccinated. Um, I do believe we have one department, um, again, anecdotally, where I don't think that the vaccination um, levels are nearly that high. But for the most part, most of our staff members, um, you know, were taking advantage of the opportunity to become vaccinated.
Is there any guidance out on, I mean, do we require that as an employer? Can we require it? You know, again, I I kind of feel like we're in an interesting spot, especially with some of our departments, given the very personal contact that some departments have with with people, you know, and especially vulnerable folks, you know. Um, you know, I'm thinking, obviously, you know, dispatchers, police department, you know, potentially Public Works, you know, the library, you know, I mean, again, we're we're interacting pretty heavily, you know, social service, we're interacting pretty heavily with with populations, sometimes at their worst day. So and, you know, has that come out at all?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a great question. It's one we posed to the Health District a little while back in terms of, you know, could we require our employees to become vaccinated? And um, my understanding through the Health District is that because it is still technically um, an emergency status, the vaccine, um, that we are, there's some legal challenges and hurdles with with requiring our staff members to become vaccinated. It is a question um, I did pose to Bob last week. So um, again, hoping just to learn a little bit more on that, see if the guidance on that is evolving. Uh, you know, obviously, certainly, I would, I would think that if we are able at some point in time to require it, you know, for example, um, staff members that might have, um, you know, medical purpose, maybe they're responding to a call for a service, for example, or our clinical social workers, et cetera. Um, maybe it's appropriate, right, in those circumstances to to require it. Um, so at this time, we don't believe we can, but we are looking into it further.
Okay, there. Thank you. I just
It's a, it's a great question.
Yeah, and I, again, I'm not pushing an agenda one way or another. It's just, I think it's all employers are grappling with this and especially those that are you know, very public facing, you know, like ours, I mean, our our role is to is to serve the public. So it's an interesting one.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Um, and then our Social Services Department is continuing to assist our residents experiencing food insecurity. Um, at our most recent Tuesday, they assisted a hundred and one households, which included uh, twenty four homebound deliveries, and they provided twenty two kid-friendly bags. So you may recall at the height of uh, the pandemic, we were seeing um, a pretty drastic increase and we were assisting about a hundred and forty households per month. Um, normally, we assist uh, pre-pandemic about eighty households a month. So we're still, you know, averaging about twenty households more than normal, but as we are starting to see the recovery happen and and people starting to, you know, stabilize employment opportunities and such, again, we have seen those numbers come down a bit. Um, Eric did a great job, um, touching on uh, how we are hopeful and planning to return to in-person meetings at the end of June. Um, I did summarize um, in your packet for you this evening under the communication section. Um, I tended to plan in terms of how we are not only planning to come back in person for our meetings, but to sort of accommodate our new virtual world. Um, so we might be able to offer hybrid meetings to board members and staff members. Uh, perhaps members of the public participate virtually through public audience and things of that nature. So I'm happy to talk about that later in the meeting if the folks have an interest in that. Um, and then just lastly, under pandemic, I wanted to sort of get a, get a feeling from folks. I had a nice chat with Wendy about this, but as you know, we are starting to sort of shift to this reopening phase and as we're seeing case numbers come down. Um, you know, do board members feel at this point just getting a weekly email update for me on case numbers and vaccination numbers would be helpful? Or would you like me to continue to report out on that at your meetings as well?
Do you want me to? Well, I I my comment was just that I'm still getting inundated with the emails from the state level and you know, the numbers, it it's it's not that it's not relevant anymore, but because the mask mandates have been removed and outdoors and things like that, it's almost no, I'm trying not to pay attention to that anymore. It's it's not as relevant as it was in the past. So maybe just posting the numbers somewhere rather than, you know, having to report them out might be a a easier way. People can look if they're interested and if not. That's my feeling.
Yeah, I support that. I I, yeah, I think the COVID numbers are are less relevant, but I am interested in the vaccination rates if we see them leveling off. Um, and there's a public awareness role that we can play um, partnering with the Health District or otherwise, that might be important. So maybe just focusing on the vaccination numbers.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, maybe what I can do is still include the data in the manager's report, but for the purposes of the meeting, maybe just touch on the vaccination numbers. And that way, the information, you know, is still getting emailed to people, but for the purpose of the meeting, maybe focus on vaccination.
Right.
Yeah, that's great feedback. Thank you. Uh, just a couple of items under selectmen business, as as Eric mentioned, um, we are currently uh, working through the guidance for the American Rescue Plan. Um, I want to really thank Amy in particular, um, for her work in in this area. And we will bring um, some potential ideas to all of you for your June fourteenth Board of Selectmen meeting. Um, these are some ideas that have been compiled from staff ideas as well as a few ideas that um, various board members have sent to me. And we're going to also do our best to really kind of work through um, for that meeting. Yes, we think that these ideas might be, you know, doable under under the guidance we're receiving from the federal government, or these are great ideas, but no, we don't think we're going to be able to use um, stimulus money to fund them, just to really help sort of guide the discussion and conversation. Um, and and again, we're really trying to generate some ideas with those sort of broader objectives that they provided to us. Um, Amy did a very nice job at a high level summarizing um, some of the permissible uses um, for the Board of Finance meeting that happened just last week. So um, I know we shared that information with the Board of Selectmen through through email, uh, but just want to encourage the public, if you are interested in this topic, the May eighteenth Board of Finance meeting, um, the packet includes the information, um, as well as they can go back and watch the video at simsberrytv.org. Um, some very good news to report. Um, you may recall last July, uh, we um, through Board of Selectmen approval, um, submitted a grant application to uh, DEEP at the state for the Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Program. Um, we were notified over the weekend that we have received four hundred thousand dollars, um, that will help towards the purchase of Meadowwood. Um, so that's very good news. You know, initially, we had hopes for more, and then they changed the guidelines to the program. So you may recall when I updated you all in March, we said, we think we're going to get four hundred, but we we don't know for certain. Well, we now know for certain, we are getting four hundred thousand dollars towards the acquisition. So very good news.
Outstanding.
Yes, yes, it is. And also, we're speaking, we're bringing forward a supplemental appropriation request to essentially appropriate the grant funds towards the acquisition. Um, and then there's also a resolution that the state would like us to adopt. So we'll have a few items for you at your next meeting. That's very good news.
Very good news. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then just quickly, under department news and notes, just two new items. There's a few recurring, um, that I'll I'll leave on there for our readers. Uh, but I want to congratulate Kevin Lamb. Um, he was recently promoted uh, from truck driver to senior mechanic. Kevin works in our highway division um, of our Public Works Department. He's been with us since two thousand and three. Um, prior to coming to work for the town, he had sixteen years of experience um, servicing school buses and heavy equipment for local businesses here in the area. Um, he has also been um, servicing small engine engines since he was a teenager. Um, he's demonstrated a high aptitude for computers and technology, and I know this is very important to him, as well as our recently promoted um, mechanic supervisor, but we really want to advance um, our use of technology and fleet maintenance software for record keeping purposes and preventive maintenance. So we're really excited about his skill set and and what he's going to bring to that endeavor. Um, during his time with us, he's performed probably just about every duty that you could you could do in highway, which is just incredibly valuable to this position. So he's a lifelong resident and just great ask to the department and want to wish him well in his new position. And then, um, lastly, just to note, this was a fun one. Um, I re- I recently served as a panelist um, for a webinar, which was facilitating innovation through developing and implementing best practices. Um, and uh, the panelists, including myself, we reacted to a best practices program um, that's been utilized by the state of Massachusetts. Uh, we discussed Connecticut local government services and projects and policies and other opportunities uh, that we may be able, if this model was implemented here and how we might be able to use that. I was part of assisting a M P A um, student who had worked on this as a thesis uh, thesis project. Um, and the panel was co-sponsored by the UConn Department of Public Policy, Connecticut ASPA, CROG, and the Advisory Commission on Intergovernmental Relations. It was, it was a real fun one. So uh, definitely shared my thoughts on where I thought we could benefit uh, from the Massachusetts model and some uh, regional efforts and shared, shared, you know, approaches to things such as assessment staffing, building official staffing, ethics code. Um, it was, it was just a fun time, so.
Nothing sounds more exhilarating than a panel.
That's why I'm nerding out again on you guys, but it was fun for me.
Thank God for you. That's awesome.
And thank you for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Um, in selectmen action tonight, item A is Aging and Disabilities, uh, social media request. And Diana, uh, you've been incredibly patient. Uh, Diane Isley is Chair of Aging and Disability. Really, a rather non-controversial item, but I wanted to, that you are with us and you stuck with us for an hour and a half. I wanted to see um, if I wanted to see um, if there was anything you would like to add or share on this topic.
Well, yeah, I was here, um, in case anybody had any questions on why we would like a Facebook page, and since I set up the page, the parameters regarding the rules and regulations, which I know the town um, has uh, regulations around Facebook pages, there's no posting from outside. Members, people can ask a question, but they can't post and reply to things, and it's really informational purposes only. We do actually have a lot of events. We do um, quarterly events for those with disabilities, but we also do um, semi-annual events for seniors and um, plus we constantly have information that we would like to share with our community for both these aging and those with disabilities. And it would be a great place for everybody to be able to go to for this information, not only on our programs and uh, but um, presentations, but also any information that we need to share as a town or um, as a community. I, I think people are always asking if we have a Facebook page that they can find out how to participate in something, or um, you know, there was actually this whole new transportation um, system that I just had uh, somebody come in and talk to us about. That kind of information, I think, would be great to post on our Facebook page for seniors and people with disability who don't know about this new, um, it's actually not new, but new to information to our commission on the Freedom Ride Program that um, is available to, to residents in Simsbury, and it's a really great program. So things like that, I would love to be able to post on Facebook and get information out to our community.
Great. Thanks, Diana. Any questions?
My only question to us, do we want to just approve omnibus social media so that if you want to do Instagram in a month, we don't have to come back and do it again? Is that okay, Maria? Didn't we have that before, where we had like a Facebook and then they wanted Twitter or something like that? We had to, they had to come back?
Start TikTok, that'll be a whole.
No TikTok. No TikTok.
I'm not getting on TikTok. My daughter would die.
I don't know, Maria, is that, is that in order just to do Facebook and any other applicable?
Kind of proactively say yes, they could do, you know, Facebook, Twitter, um, you know. I amend the motion to reflect those two additions.
I, I would hate to have, oh, we, you know, Twitter would be great, or Instagram, which is, you know, owned by Facebook, you know, to make it easy, so you don't have to come back and enjoy another hour and a half of our uh, intellectual conversations, sir.
All right. Is there a motion effective May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one to approve the creation of an Aging and Disability Commission Facebook account to be used by the commission uh, to, to publicize their efforts and related content of which uh, town staff will have oversight, and let the motion reflect that that also includes uh, Instagram and Twitter.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Hi, Diana.
Thank you, Diana.
Thank you all very much. I'm gonna go now.
Okay.
Oh, come on.
Thank you. Uh, item B is tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of one thousand one hundred eight dollars and eighty-six cents, and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved.
I heard Sean is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Hey. And uh, finally, under selectmen action, I'll turn it over to Amy Meriwether, uh, Simsbury's Finance Director uh, for the uh, quarterly budget status report.
Hello, everybody. I'm sure this will be the highlight of your evening. But we'll go ahead and get into it. Um, we'll start with the general fund revenues. Um, so good, good news to report here. Um, as of March thirty-first, we are almost at about ninety-nine point five million um, in revenue dollars, or a ninety-seven percent of budget. As you know, the majority of that comes from the tax department with our last collection in January, and our tax department is showing a hundred percent of budget. Um, moving on to some good news, um, within the permit fees of the building department, they are already exceeding their budget by six hundred dollars, so some good news there. Uh, finance department still slacking. Um, unfortunately, due to um, COVID and the interest on the investments, we're currently at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars under budget. But to make up for a little bit of that, we did get some um, unanticipated COVID relief funds, um, totaling about two hundred thousand dollars, so this brings us to about sixty-seven percent of budget. So as you can imagine, we probably won't hit our budget target, but luckily, the building department and the town clerk are carrying us.
You didn't, you didn't put investments in Doge going to try to make up the uh, the interest income there?
Oh, I would have gotten fired for that, but you know, I, I need to keep my job a little longer, till I hit the lottery. Um, so then on the town clerks department, the recording fees are already over budget by about sixty-one thousand dollars, and conveyance is already at a hundred percent of budget. Onto the expenditure side, um, we're at about seventy-six million dollars um, in expenditures as of March thirty-first, or seventy-three percent of budget, so we're pretty much right in line where we should be. Um, we're anticipated to see some um, savings and expenditures um, at the end of the year, mainly in our um, conferences and education line items, as well as some staff vacancies and turnovers. So that combined with the line items that I just went through on the revenue side, overall, our surplus should be around seven hundred thousand dollars by the end of the year. Um, moving on to the Simsbury Farms Fund, um, our increased fund balance as of the end of March is about almost two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. This is actually a hundred and ten thousand dollar increase compared to the same time last year. You'll see from the report that our special um, programs and our day camps um, are actually down compared to last year. But then you'll also see on the expenditure side, the expenditures are down as well. Obviously, you know, that is um, related to COVID. And then um, on our golf side, we are actually increased um, from last year about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And um, of course, you'll see a corresponding in, increase in the um, golf course expenditures as well, which is actually mainly due to a large piece of equipment that they had purchased. Um, so overall, that fund is doing pretty well. And then the last um, highlight I have for you this morning is on the health insurance fund. Um, right now, our claims, they were budgeted at about fourteen point seven million, and you can see that they're just a shy over ten million dollars. If our claims continue to progress as they have been, um, there's a potential to see about one point seven million dollars savings related to the claims. Um, our total reserves right now are about five point five million, or thirty-seven percent of expected claims. And as I tell you every quarter, the goal is to be about twenty to twenty-five percent of expected claims. If we do see the realized savings in the claims of the one point seven million, we could be over forty percent um, of expected claims, um, in our, we could be at forty percent of reserve by the end of the year. So we did just talk to our um, benefits consultants. Um, we did our quarterly benefits meeting uh, last week. And um, although these numbers are good, they're still erring on the side of caution, and they're not sure, you know, they, they anticipate some sort of spike eventually. Um, they're not sure when, so they are being cautiously optimistic. So we could see a little bit of claims come back um, within the next couple of years, as people kind of reengage into their their health, their doctor's appointments, elective procedures, things of that nature. So we'll just keep an eye on that and continue to report out. But that's all I have for highlights, unless anybody else has any questions.
I, I do have one, and, and again, it's a fund that probably nobody cares about, but the sewer fund. Assessments, I mean, that, that's a, that's a pretty stable number, so how, how did, how did they commit a hundred and ten percent of budget on assessments? Did we miss uh, development that came in? Cause we don't have ten percent of more houses all of a sudden down.
No, I think he's just conservative in his budget estimates.
Yeah, but I mean, there's a set number of users divided by, times three hundred and sixty-five dollars, so that's, I mean, that number should be exact, right?
Theoretically, I guess they could. I don't think that they do, but I can find out. I can ask.
Yeah. And then again, on the same note, the intergovernmental revenues, I mean, I thought we had a set agreement with Avon, so that number shouldn't be down either, right?
Um, that one, I know why that one's down, so that one is related to the clean water um, fund, bond refunding that we did.
Okay.
We took all of that savings in the current year, so they're no longer paying on it. We're no longer paying on it, and then they start paying on it again in July.
Gotcha, that makes sense. Okay, and then the miscellaneous was the, the, the savings? The one-ten that we're showing in the fund?
One-ten is, no, that's not the savings.
Okay.
But it is related to the bond refunding. Can I get the specifics on that? I'll get back.
No, it's okay. It's just, yeah, again, you know, I, I get the need, but you know, we just, again, it's, we, we, we kind of gloss over that one, but, you know, we do need to make sure that, you know, again, we're not quote-unquote overcharging and unnecessarily building excess reserves. If we're certainly in need of those, but again, with, with the plant being stable, if we're gonna, you know, look to, to redo that or stuff, I certainly understand it, but I just want to make sure, you know, because that is a competitive issue for us in terms of building permits, right, and, and it's not building permits, but you know, building in town, right, and we had a big dust-up over that years ago, that the, those fees were out of line with what the market would bear, so just want to make sure that, again, we don't spend a lot of time on that in the budget process, but that one caught my eye.
Fair enough. Um, so I'll get more information on the assessments and see how he budgeted, and then I can tell you that the fund balance, because I do ask him this every year. Um, the fund balance is quite significant, it's because um, they don't want to have to go out and bond or take out loans for the next time the state decides that they need to do mandatory um, restructuring of their infrastructure. So last, got the clean water fund loan, and this time they're building up, um, so that the whole thing doesn't have to be bonded.
Yeah, and I, I get that. That's a philosophical conversation, because at two percent debt, which is what we got the clean water fund at, right? I mean, and I know we're able to refinance even cheaper, but and, and we shouldn't necessarily always assume the two percent's available, but um, it's hard not to bond when it is that cheap. And again, you know, saving up forty million dollars is an admirable task, um, but at the same time, you know, you gotta balance that with the structure, but anyway. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I know no one else.
Other questions for Amy?
Um, Eric, I had one. I had presumed, Amy, that the uh, surplus in the sewer account had actually come from, I assumed that the sewer permits work much like a, a building occupancy or, or uh, when, when a building gets their occupancy, that that's when the sewer fund is due, so I had presumed that that increase was actually from the new apartments and such that uh, got their COs. Is that a wrong assumption on my part?
No, it could be very well true. Um,
Yeah, it might have been, yeah.
I think that he would have had that data, but honestly, like I said, I'm not sure what went into his budget number, so I'll just send something out to you all to, so that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, again, don't spend
Tony will know off the top of his head, no doubt.
He's probably already sent you an email.
Probably will.
I think he's on vacation, but had he not been, it would have been in my inbox already.
Any other questions uh, for Amy? Okay, thanks very much, Amy. Appreciate it. Uh, moving on to appointments and resignations, is there a motion effective May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one to appoint Alan Bradford as a regular member of the Insurance Committee, with a term expiring December second, twenty-twenty-one?
So moved.
Again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And is there a motion effective May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one to appoint Robert Mule as a regular member of the Board of Ethics, with a term expiring January first, twenty-twenty-three?
It's Mulay.
It's Mulay, yeah.
Thank you. I needed the accent over the E. I didn't see it. Sorry.
All good.
My apologies.
I'll move Mr. Mulay's uh, appointment.
I'll second Mr. Mulay.
And all in favor of Mr. Mulay's appointment?
Aye.
Aye.
You never mispronounce a name, so we gotta give you a hard time.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
You do, you do a really good job of it.
Thanks. As a former radio guy.
Not easy to do that.
Uh, any feedback on the minutes from our last meeting on May tenth?
Outstanding, as always.
Okay. Stan, are there any updates from uh, the Selectmen Liaison, um, or any subcommittees?
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. Sure, you can go, Sean.
I, quick one. The Board of Finance met last week. Obviously, they, as, as was talked about in the reports, they set the uh, the mill rate, um, talked briefly about the budget referendum, um, and that, so we're all set there. Um, the topic that Chairman Pomeroy brought up at our public audience of uh, a, a summertime or off-budget uh, capital working group was, was raised there. Um, I think we should all be thinking about what that might look like. Um, you know, I have some questions about the chairmanship or, or quite possibly even the need for it. I, I, I understand and I agree with the need for collaboration. Um, but candidly, I mean, the capital, capital is probably um, not the easiest thing we do, but I mean, we have a six-year capital plan. Um, and it's, um, you know, it's, it's pretty well-defined from a, you know, the, the five or ten or fifteen projects that are out there. Um, and we know what debt is coming off, um, so we have an idea um, every year of, of the potential debt capacity. Um, I am interested, though, in, in taking the long-term financing, uh, planning, long-range planning aim with the Board of, Board of Educators, Board of Education and Board of Finance. So I do think there's some, 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 some um, substantial value to, to getting a couple of us in a room and making sure that we're talking um, about capital needs, about items that are coming down the timeframe, so, um, I guess my request here is, is they did bring it up, um, you know, they mentioned that we didn't respond, you know, it was public audience. We traditionally don't respond to public audience. Um, but we certainly didn't ignore Chairman Pomeroy, and, and I think it's, it's certainly an interesting topic to explore. Um, and I certainly did appreciate his um, his comments on um, us working together and, and perhaps changing the, the way we, we do the tri-board meeting. Um, or otherwise, um, you know, because we're all, we're all a bunch of volunteers just trying to get stuff done, and we have different vantage points, a different perspective. Um, and I heard a lot of good things from the Board of Finance about, um, and I don't know if it was intentional or if it was just, just um, natural, but um, the, in, in terms of who's, whose lane is what. Um, because I think we've all got a bit of a different idea about who drives in which lane, and, and again, um, I think some of these collaborative conversations might help us not push each other back into our lanes, but, but be more sensitive to it, and, and again, perhaps approach the conversations um, a bit with a different lens. Uh, cause again, regardless of whether we agree or disagree, I think, you know, there's six of us here, there's six of us there on the Board of Finance, and there's, you know, um, was there eight folks on the Board of Ed? Um, six folks on the Board of Ed, um, all doing a, all doing what they think is best for the town. Um, so if, if nothing else, I know we had a pretty challenging discussion, um, at some point, certainly led by my comments and otherwise, um, in the heat of the moment, but I, at the end of the day, uh, a lot of smart people working on the same thing. How do we, uh, how do we manage a hundred million dollar budget uh, together with the town manager, deputy town manager, finance director, a lot of smart people, a lot of dedicated staff. Um, so we're all trying to go in the same direction, and we've all got a different idea how to get there. Uh, that's okay, so.
Yeah, I, I was gonna, look, thanks for reminding me about that, Sean. I was, that's not on my list, but um, I, I actually like the idea of that capital budgeting committee so that we get more information earlier on all the projects, because there were many, even ma, maybe not just in the current year, but in the out year, so we know what's coming, and we have detail, some description and data, so that we have a better understanding going into the whole capital um, budgeting process in the six-year outlook.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be interesting, because the problem with the six-year plan, Wendy, is by nature, it's ill-defined.
Yeah.
Because the construction costs change, right? Our needs change, you know, and there's technically, there's no such thing as anything but what we're doing this year. That plan is just illustrative, and there's actually no cuts or additions. It's just a spreadsheet, right? And it's a, it's a thirty-thousand-foot concept of what we might fund, but in my ten years, we've never stuck to that plan. Um, to the letter of it, right? We've, conceptually, the big stuff has generally come down, but Henry James moved around, what, Mike, ten times? Over fifteen years, so, you know, the seniors. You know, I mean, it's, as I'm not saying, it's, it's not worth it, but it's, you know, whatever's on the out years is conceptual. So I agree with you. I think we've got to find a better way to um, to your point, Wendy, data. How do we make those decisions when a time comes? What data do we need so that we don't get into the pickle we got in this year, where um, you know, we had prioritized and the Board of Finance um, saw it differently, so.
Well, anyway, I, I'll volunteer for that committee if we get there, so just throwing that out there. That's not on my, my report. Uh, I did want to bring up a couple of things. The Board of Ed is meeting tomorrow, which is always awkward, because whatever I'm reporting here is old news, because there's a meeting the next day, um, and it's being held in person at Terrifil School, so I'm gonna bike over there, but I'm not gonna ride down Corrie Lane, so. Too bad there's no bike path, right, that I could
Get in there, Wendy.
With your hon. Um, I just wanted to, a couple of meetings ago, Sharon Thomas had proposed a change to Columbus Day to refer to it as uh, Indigenous Peoples' Day, which has happened across the country. Uh, and, you know, different groups have recommended that, different towns have accepted it. A couple of states have actually adopted it at the state level. Um, and they're, they're looking into that right now. Susan has asked um, Sue Lemke to put together some information on that. So I just wanted to call attention to that.
So I just wanted to call attention to that, that people are interested in that. And then what Diana was talking about, that aging and disability, this, they're looking into additional transportation needs for the disabled and people who can't get around. And that's that Freedom Ride Program that she talked about is in conjunction with the, I think, is the Greater Hartford Transit Authority. And they're really trying to find ways for people, young and old, to be able to get out of Simsbury and get back here to do other things. And that's all I have.
Any other reports?
Oh, I have one more thing. Could I just say this? Because I don't think anybody has said this, but John Hampton, our state rep, I don't know if it's been said on other meetings, it was said on the Board of Finance, that he's out from the legislature due to a medical issue and has been out. And I do not know when he's coming back, but they put out a statement last week, I think, through Patch.
Thanks, Wendy. Wishing him well. On Selectmen, I'm sorry, the communication section of our packet. Maria put a nice memo together about the future of in-person and hybrid meetings. And I wanted to see if there were any thoughts or questions on that topic, because this is going to be a transition for us.
I have a question, Maria. So we have a plan in place that will work based on the June 30th date, right? Like, we're going to come back in person on June 28th. And so just explain, if Governor Lamont pushes that out another month, we can still move forward with our plan, right? It just gives us another month of maybe changing things?
Yeah. So if it's extended to July 20th, you know, it would still at least allow the option for groups to meet fully virtually if they wanted to. I do suspect if it is extended until July 20th, based on some feedback that Mike Litten has shared with me. I think some of our land decisions, these in particular, would like to remain in the fully virtual format as long as possible. But what we are not necessarily expecting with some of the legislation that's being discussed is that sort of a fully virtual format would, you know, be sort of in perpetuity. Again, that hybrid option is something that's being discussed. But right, I think that we may see some of our groups, if they have the option to go fully virtual until the 20th, I think they may take advantage of that.
And just that the town, we're basically hoping and going to try to be able to meet in person and basically hybrid. So that way we can get, yeah, I think that's great.
Yeah, exactly. We're trying to accommodate sort of this new virtual format and be able to have technology that would allow us to do hybrid in a way that we can broadcast with quality. And so we're looking at some technology like L Labs and Zoo Rooms. We're actually testing an owl in the near future. I think Rick was in the process of purchasing one today, actually. So, yeah, so again, the plan is that when we come back on June 28th, that you would be able to have the hybrid option available in the event that, again, a board member was safe traveling, such as Chris this evening or something of that nature. So that's the hope.
Yeah, question on that. So does one of us have to be in the room? Like, how's that going to work, right? Because if, I mean, essentially, it's perpetually virtual if no one shows up, right? So how does that, how does that work? Are we going to figure that out? Because somebody's got to be there to push the button, right? Or?
Yeah. Yeah. And we've been talking about at staff level, I mean, really, at a minimum, there's probably going to at least, you know, one to two staff members that would be present. You know, maybe somebody to set up the technology in addition to the staff person who's actually staffing the committee. So kind of similar to what we've been doing virtually, you know, a lot of our, you know, our committees, you know, we've got a primary staff member that's helping to staff the committee or the board, and then another staff member that's helping with running the zoo technology. So it'll essentially be like that, but just, you know, staff members in the room, possibly.
Yeah. And then to that end, again, we don't ask obviously for elected officials vaccination status, but I assume Town Hall is going to require masks for unvaccinated folks, like a lot of businesses. So now we'll apply for boards and commission meetings as well.
Yes, yes, we're still requiring masks.
Okay.
Oh, and then one, I believe I noted this in the memo, and we will get the list to you. But one of the things I really want to thank Lisa Cream and Tom Fitzgerald for this, but they took a look at essentially all of our boards, all of our committees and their meeting schedule for the entire summer through August 30th. And we really wanted to try and move our groups who might want to move or meet in person to essentially larger spaces for the summer. Again, just as, you know, we're meeting indoors and, you know, people are trying to still get vaccinated. So we would probably meet at the Library Program Room for the Board of Selectmen, again, because the main meeting room can get a little tight. So again, they put together a very nice calendar of sort of alternative meeting space for all of our groups just to accommodate for more distancing for the next few months.
Cool.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question? All right. Thanks for all the thought that's going into this. We, are we going to be staying on the line for the next conversation, Maria? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn from our regular meeting?
So moved.
Bagging.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.